For Monday, September 18th, please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Let's start the evening off with the agenda. Item number one, to approve minutes of the September 5th, 2023 meeting and the September 5th, 2023 joint special meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Second item is a hearing of public concerns. Seeing no one coming forward, I'll move on to item number three, which is the clerk treasurer's report.
Counsel has previously been presented with the financial statement and banking information for the month ended August 31st. And if any questions in that regard, I'm happy to make certain them now or at any time in the future.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Next item is an ordinance. John, would you please number and read?
Ordinance number 38, 2023, Northern's amending section 111.031 of the City of Bryan codified ordinances to reflect the change in Ohio law concerning bid requirements.
Counsel, the reason for this ordinance is the state legislature and the governor signed a bill that goes into effect October 3rd that allows governments, local governments, county governments to increase the competitive bidding amount from $50,000 to $75,000. Primary reason is inflationary costs of all of the products. It was limiting the ability to actually do anything for that $50,000 threshold. The other thing is they would include a 3% increase as determined and published by the Ohio Director of Commerce beginning 2025. The reason that you're seeing this is even though the state passed it, it exempt governments that had their own charter. And so we, as a charter municipality, have to pass our own ordinance in order to follow suit. And we are respectfully requesting that we do so this evening. Obviously, if there's any discussion, we welcome that as well.
I just had, those were the only changes that were in there. There wasn't... Okay. I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 47, 2023, a resolution to accept $314,711.31 grant from the Bryan Area Foundation to the Parks and Recreation Department for the Lincoln Park Inclusive Playground.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Evening.
In front of you, you should have legislation to accept a donation from the Bryan Area Foundation. The first thing I want to make clear is, is although the check comes from Bryan Area Foundation, you should have also received a flyer in there that lists the other donors that make up this donation. I'm not sure if it makes a difference or not, but it's not really a grant, but it is through the donations, through the community, to the foundation that they have been able to cut a check to us for this $314,000.
Actually, when I read that, I wondered about that. I didn't understand the concept of, I understand the concept of a grant.
Yes.
I didn't see how that fit with this.
Yeah.
So you're saying you would not necessarily...
We did receive a grant from the Bryan Area Foundation for $100,000 for the inclusive playground, which is included in this 300...
Oh, so that is, so it is partially that. Okay.
Yes, it is partially that.
Okay.
But the rest of it is a donation.
Right.
From other community members, which I have wanted to make sure you guys saw that sheet that lists everybody that has given to this point.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Item number six is an ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 39, 2023, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring emergency. So there is, this ordinance includes $322,000 or so in stuff now or amended appropriations, the bulk of which we just spoke about, of the $314,000 the city received from the Bryan Area Foundation and multiple donors. And there was also a $5,000 donation in this amount from the Bryan Hills, also for the Lincoln Park Inclusive Playground. And then there were multiple smaller donations still coming in related to the girl named, we have to be here, including of note $1,752 that came in through the Eventbrite website. They were asking for all the area donations for those people. That's all that.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Item number seven is an ordinance. John, please number and read.
Ordinance number 40, 2023, an ordinance to authorize the purchase of the Lincoln Park Game Time Playground equipment, site accessories, surfacing, and related products and services using Omnia Partners, a cooperative purchasing program for state and local government entities.
Again, this relates to the actual purchasing of the playground equipment, site accessory surfacing, and any and other related products for the Lincoln Park Inclusive Playground. We plan to use Omnia Partners, which is a procurement site for local and state governments that thereby waives the bidding process for this kind of playground equipment.
Whereabouts on the property is this going to go again?
It's going to be fairly centered, east and west, and then also a little bit north and south. It's going to sit a little bit further to the south because we're going to attach to the south sidewalk off of Butler Street.
Okay.
But it's, it's pretty well centered.
When I read over this, of course, half of this stuff, I didn't know what it was, but it was in a rural thing, and I thought, somebody's going to have some fun on this. It looks like it'll be fun for the kids.
The other thing to keep in mind, too, is the idea that there will be a restroom facility there, and there is a sanitary sewer that runs north and south from Butler Street to the back alley, which is what we'll need to tie the restrooms into also. So we've had to situate it just a little bit to be able to make sure that the restrooms can go and tie into the sanitary, and then the playground will be right off the restrooms.
And then you're going to put in a parking lot also?
Currently, we, we have already done some of the parking improvements along the back alley. There's street access. We'll do all the curb cuts, so they're handicap accessible. But for right now, we'll have street all the way down Cherry, down Butler, and then we'll have back alley parking. That'll be angle parking off the alley.
Okay.
Will that be security cameras?
The plan will, yeah, there'll be, there'll be cameras.
I think that, I'm not talking about the area. I'm talking about everywhere I go, when people that I know, I just talked to some people in Toledo, they upgraded some park stuff. First thing they said was, we told them, we're not going to approve anything. This is from a council person. Until I know you're putting up some kind of a security camera, because they, they, I think in Toledo, they also had that pool problem. They had two kids threw CO2 and some fire extinguisher stuff in, and they didn't, that was a $100,000 shutdown. So I think it was kind of, kind of more of a scab for them, but I, it kind of got me thinking.
Yeah, we are, we've been really close for quite a while, but a lot of our parks now have security cameras in them. The biggest thing is being able to have a hub that you can record that stuff into. That's the other thing the restroom facility will provide us is, in the maintenance room, where all of our plumbing will be located, we'll be able to house our computer unit and all the hard drives and all that fun stuff. So everything will be recorded. They're motion censored, so they don't run constantly. The picture runs constantly, but they don't record constantly.
Right.
They record once activity is, is, generates movement for them to be able to turn on, and then the cameras start recording. So yes, it'll be fully, it'll be fully camered.
Well, you have my permission to delete me when I miss like a five or six foot putt this fall. Because that'd just be embarrassing.
We've actually saved that one.
Here's Councilman Betts rolling up again.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. Item number eight on the agenda is a resolution. John, please number and read.
Resolution number 48, 2023, the resolution authorizing the Chief of Police of the City of Bryan to apply for and manage grants associated with the Ohio criminal justice system for body worn cameras for the City of Bryan as needed.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening.
Just asking again for permission to apply one more time for this body worn camera grant. The first time around, we received just over $42,000. We have a little bit more of equipment we'd like to obtain. So we, again, ask permission to apply, just to try to get a little bit more out of that grant.
Where do these cameras go? I see pictures of them on, on, I mean, when they're in use, on TV and things that says this is the camera that the policeman who brought, where do they go on your body?
Up on the vest.
Right on the, right on the chest?
Yep.
Okay. I was just curious. I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. That completes our agenda items. Go around the room. Mary?
Yes, a couple of things to note. October 2nd at 5:30, which is a Tuesday, will be our next meeting due to the observation of Ready, Set, Relax, which is the community initiative to stay home after 5 o'clock and hang out with your family or grandkids. With that being said, there will be no BNU YouTube recording, as the EPA also moved that evening at 5:00, so they cannot do a record on that. I'm excited that I don't have any recording.
Thank you. John? Chief? Streets?
Little bit of information for you. Back in, was it June, we met with Republic. We had kind of like our one-year drag session. And the biggest complaint that we hear is the recycling schedule. That's when there's five weeks in the month, it gets screwed up. So beginning October 1st is going to go to every other week instead of the first and third, and second, fourth week. So if you're first and third, you'll be a A week, which nothing will change until the end of November, I think is the next fifth week. So after November, you won't always be the first week, third week, it'll be every other. And that's, the schedule on the internet is going to change because they can't, the biggest problem was, they can't change the dates on the app until after the fact. So when there was a fifth week, we would look at it, and it would say ours is today, but it was wrong, and they couldn't change it. And they tried for a year to figure out how to change it to make it work, and they can't. So it's going to change to a true every other week. And the map legend that's online will say that now. It'll say A week can be week. You can find where you're at on the map, and everything.
Someone just communicated that this week, because I found that out. You know, was it from Bryan or was it from Republic?
You know what, it would have, did you just get your utility bill?
Well, I knew on the utility bill, it talked about the, all big trash thing pickup.
It was supposed to be on your City Bryan utility bill.
That's probably where it was. Okay.
We're all on different cycles, so.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because that's a, that's a big enough change and a valued enough change that, that probably ought to be communicated fairly well, that affected this date. It's now going to go, because I can't tell you how many times I heard that as a problem, like you mentioned, is that I keep, first of all, keeping track of which week is this, is much easier every other than, oh, wait a minute, there's three this month, oh crap, it's not until next week. That's one complaint. The second was not just complexity, it was, I've got way, way too much recyclable. It's, it's coming out my ears, so I'm going to have to throw it away. So here's my question. Did, do they see value? I mean, I certainly appreciate that personally, and I think a lot of other people will as well, but I don't know that. But I do know personally, I will appreciate going every other week. But does it also help, were they sending, were they putting a lot of, we did, was there a lot of recyclable stuff being put in the trash bin that was being dumped at the landfill? That was my concern. Right? Because our, after going three weeks with, we get a lot of stuff from, a lot of boxes, a lot of Amazon, a lot of different things. Our recycling bin was pretty well filled, and many of the people in my area were having the same issue. Were they seeing like an, you know if they were, I know if you don't.
They did.
Were they seeing like an uptake? Did they say anything?
They didn't indicate that. And again, with the arms, they're not necessarily always noticing what's going into the truck.
Okay.
Or being able to differentiate it. Because the truth is, you can throw a pizza box in the trash because it got grease on it and it's not recyclable.
Right.
And it's hard to differentiate that as it's rolling into a truck.
From a cargo, right, cargo.
But with that being said, like, they did agree that they could not kind of keep their portion of the agreement because their, their app and their computer were wrong. And when I would continue, and Tyson would continue to talk to the leadership and the corporate guy that, that we talked to, I'm like, I can't argue this to our residents. Like, they're correct. Your app is wrong. There is absolutely no sense to this. And people are overfilling when they have a third week. And it happens about five times a year for each section, which is enough. And that's almost 50% of the year. So they did agree that even though the contract said twice a month, that they would amend that because they could not work out the app and the website on their own. And after a year.
We were the only ones that did it, the first and third, second, fourth. Everywhere else that they pick up is every other week.
But that's what they wrote in their bid specs, because we had asked them for an every other week recycling, and then the bid specs, it said twice a month. Well, in our bid specs it said, but in their bid response.
I see. Well, it's a, it's a, I personally appreciate the move. I just was wondering if Republic also could find some value in this, in that, don't they take the trash to the landfill?
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if that would be cut down some and would help their landfill trash fees, but.
Which they own.
They own the land.
Yeah, no, I understand that, too.
Yes. I know, I understand what you're saying. There should be more recycling going to the recycling.
Yes.
Because it'll all fit in your can rather than having to put recycling into your trash can. Yes.
Thank you.
And then Mark.
It'll be good with that.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And then, as John mentioned, the Fall Trash Drop Off at the recycler, at the Street Department on Town Line Road will be Thursday, October 19th, from 1:00 to 7:00, Friday, October 20th, from 1:00 to 7:00, and Saturday, October 21st, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. And that's all I've got.
And is that, once again, also, I know it because I just saw it. It came in the utility bill. I'm not sure that's read as scrutinized as much as we may think. Is that also going to be like maybe publicized someplace, do you think?
Our, first of all, Republic will also send it in their bill.
Okay.
We're hoping that the Bryan Times will report that in the paper, which is like Tyson's coming before you. And probably when he sends that to me in a draft, I'll put it on like my Facebook page and probably a bulletin on the city website.
Well, I, I never direct, I would, I would never, and I have no intent on directing anything of our paper or any communication. They're right to do that, but I think that is important. I think it's very important, because I think the last time I had some, some folks, not a ton, some folks say, what, what, what was that? In fact, I asked that question. He said, yeah, it's in your BNU thing. And when I went back to Joyce, she goes, really? I think I missed that, too. So we, the two of us missed it in that. So I would presume many people do, and it's a kind of an important time since it's twice a year?
Right.
Twice a year.
October and April.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Tyson.
Thanks, Tyson.
Ben, anything further?
Just real quickly, again, you guys should have received an invitation to the groundbreaking ceremony on Friday, the 29th. There will be a brief ceremony at the Lincoln School Site property at 2:00 p.m. So if you're available to join us, we'd love to have you. Again, it'll be very brief. We do plan to do a grand opening, community-wide event when we're ready to open the playground.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything from wastewater? We'll start with the agenda.
I just want to say thank you again to the Bryan Area Foundation for the money for the Parks and Rec, for the Inclusive Playground. So at this time, I looked over that list that you had of all the people that have donated to this. It's unbelievable, the amount of people that have come forth to do this. So this is something I think this city or this area needed and wanted. Paula Klein has pushed it a lot, and I'm glad she was persistent. So thank you to everyone that has donated to this cause. I think it's a wonderful, wonderful cause. Thank you. That's all I have.
Jim? Sure, I'd like to echo Judy's statement. There is so much generosity in our community. It's amazing. And it just continues to get better and better and better. So, you know, again, thank you from the bottom of my heart. I know this is going to be a great thing for the City of Bryan, and we look forward to being built. That's it.
Thank you. Mary?
I also will echo Jim and Judy on that. Thank you for the donation for the playground. I'm also going to remind everyone that Fall Fest is this Saturday along with Barn Fest. And other than that, have a good weekend.
John?
Yeah, it's pretty much what I had down. I, I just would add, thank you to, to the Bryan Area Foundation, to Omnia, I think it was. I screwed that up, I'm sorry. But to all, students, to all the individual and family and corporate sponsors. But I think it's also important to point out, not only was that going on as a fundraiser, but there was a significant fundraiser going on with the Bryan City Schools and the turf and the soccer and the da-da-da-da.
And the little theater.
Yes. So, yes. I mean, so there's a lot of, it's a lot of money coming from a relatively smaller community. And that's what I agree, makes it extremely impressive, that people want to support their community in word and deed. And I, I find that very hopeful and enlightening, I guess, at the same time. I do have one question. If no one can answer it, that's fine, because I was going to ask Chief Poole. But I'm just a little bit confused on his stat. On page one, it talks about the EMS average time is 5:45 for a response, and the fire is seven minutes. Then it says the average for all calls is 5:44. Am I doing wrong math? Am I missing something? Or is it like a typo? If someone could find that out, I'd appreciate, because that's the kind of stuff that bugs me.
What I'm going to tell you that I think happened is, seven minutes was our longest response time, but he is out this week, so I will have to.
Yeah, just, if someone could just let me know, because it's just, the rest of them make sense. If you do the math on the rest of them, they make sense. So I was wondering if it was more of a typo. Or, like you said, maybe there's some outliers that are not expressed there that would change the math.
I would guess that it might be a weighted average, because there are so many more EMS calls than fire calls.
That could, that could be, too. So it's, it's not a median, it's more of a mean, is what you're thinking. Okay. Okay.
Speculate.
No, no, that makes sense. I, I paid attention in stat analysis in school. I didn't do extremely well, but I paid attention. So yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. And that's it.
John, I just want to say your observation as far as the donations, that's, that is important, that, you know, there was a lot going on as far as people needing money for different things, and our community has definitely stepped up to the plate on that. Speaking of which, Ben, are you still accepting donations towards the Lincoln Park?
Yes.
How, how would someone go about donating to that?
They can contact your office, and we can give them in the right direction.
So just contact Parks Department?
They can also, will Amy leave that account open? You can go right to the Bryan Area Foundation and... You can go right to the Bryan Area Foundation and donate it for the inclusive playground, because we anticipate there'll be another appropriation as this project goes, I mean, for the restroom.
Restrooms are coming now.
Yeah. So that's probably the easiest place, is just take that check there. And that's something I want to, I already had my turn.
No, that's all right.
Ben and his staff and Park Board and Paula have been phenomenal in this. But Amy Miller and Jenny Horn from the foundation have also been huge helps and assets to our community for this. They put together a PowerPoint presentation very early on that largely, I think I said in one or two, but largely Ben and Amy would go and present to our corporate businesses. It was very well done, and because it's very difficult, and it takes a lot of paperwork for the clerk treasurer's office to do these $250, $100 appropriations, they agreed right away to just take the donations on behalf of the city, do one or two large donations on behalf of the community that donated, and it's also cleaned up the paperwork, you know, for audit purposes that way. So they've been a huge partner in this, and I know Ben's really grateful, too, so.
Sounds like John's really grateful.
Also that. He's trying to keep our minutes, too.
Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to thank you and your department and everybody that's been involved with this. I, you know, taking on a project like this is never easy, and it takes a lot of people. Certainly appreciate all the effort that you put into it. I had something very important I was going to say, and it just went right out of my mind. So with that, then, I guess we will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Yes.